All right, we should be good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a regular meeting, August 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of America. Under God, indivisible. Thank you. The chairman is going to be absent tonight. He's not feeling well, so I'm going to run the meeting. The next is roll call. Let's do a roll call for it, please. Mike, he's not here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Linder.
Here.
He's online.
Commissioner Nafis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pascarelli.
Here.
Chairman Sobiaski. Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Whatton.
Here.
Okay. We'll see Commissioner Hoffman or Commissioner Sobiaski for tonight's meeting. Okay. Approval of agenda?
No changes.
No changes, okay. Next is public participation on any item not listed on the agenda. You're welcome to come up and speak to us or phone in. Let's see here. Call free, that's the one that we call eight three three five four eight eight two seven six.
Yep. There was only one attendee online and no hands raised.
Okay. Any thinkers? Again, anything not related to the agenda? Mr. McCarthy. Read your name the other day. At least I'm assuming it was you. You were on the John Wallace Building Committee when they built it? There was a William McCarthy. No relation, really. I figured it was you for sure.
All three go. Bill McCarthy, not the William McCarthy, 206 Churchill Drive. I'm not sure if this is even a purview of this particular commission, but I have a couple of issues that I called the town today or yesterday about a phone, a phone pole. Yeah, power pole, some sort of pole on Church Street that has been damaged for over a year. And nobody seemed to be able to address what was going on with it. I called up Pura and Pura said they didn't want to have anything to do with it. And low and behold, it got fixed today. So I don't know what the deal is out of that, but the reason that I'm asking is that the town is planning on using the fiber optics of going at speed. And how is that going to impact if there's any damage to the the infrastructure? How quickly will will the poles be replaced and the cables re-strung? In case of an incident instance like that. The other other issue that I got, I wrote all this junk down today for some reason. The barn at Demming Farm. The Demming Young Farm. They received a grant last year for $100,000. That was stipulated to be for the barn. That those funds, as far as I can tell, went to the actual construction or reconstruction of the house itself. The barn is in disrepair, and I would just like to see somewhere down the road. I I know that that's, again, nobody really wants to take responsibility for what's going on there. But if we could look at that somehow, somewhere down the line to see if, see what can be done. If we could work with the committee over there, the Demming Young Farm committee. And then I got a bunch of junk for the public hearing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll answer your, two of your questions the best I can. The polls, the best thing to do is actually if you can walk up to the poll, poll's going to have a tag on it telling you whether it's electric poll or AT&amp;T poll, call them direct. That's usually best. If you don't have any luck there, I would suggest calling the town manager's office. And he'll probably direct you either to the town Public Works Department, or maybe they can handle it themselves. And the second item was, oh, the barn. We have nothing to do with that at all. Again, that pickup with the town manager's office with the barn. I'd love to see that barn fixed, so.
Yeah.
It looks better than it did. At least it's not all boarded up right now.
They cleared it out nicely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Anyone else?
Still no one with their hand raised online.
Okay. Remarks by commissioners? Anything? Just remind me if Chris has his hand up, because I'm not going to be able to probably see it because he doesn't have his picture up. I can't even see him. Or his name. Next is, next item is public hearing. We do have one. Would you like to read that?
So this is public hearing petition TPZ dash twenty-five dash sixteen. Site plan for a forty-unit rental apartment home development under CGS eight dash thirty G. Affordable housing application at two twenty, two twenty-six, and two forty-four Kits Lane and two twenty-six Kits Lane rear in the B dash BT Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Owner applicant Kits Lane Apartments LLC. Contact Timothy Hollister. Application received seven nine twenty twenty-five, sixty-five days to open. Public hearing by nine twelve twenty twenty-five.
Yep, and I will read the public hearing notice that was published in the paper, so it'll be rereading it. But so this is Newington Town Planning Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearing, August 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Notice is hereby given that the Newington Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in Council Chambers, Room 103 at Town Hall, 200 Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut, on Wednesday, August 27th, 2025, to consider the following petitions. Petition TPZ twenty-five sixteen. Site plan for a forty-unit rental apartment home development under CGS Section eight thirty G. Affordable housing application at two twenty, two twenty-six, two forty-four Kits Lane and two twenty-six Kits Lane rear in the Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Owner applicant Kits Lane Apartments LLC. Contact Timothy Hollister. This public hearing will be a Zoom hybrid webinar meeting. Information on how to attend the meeting will be posted on the town website at link follows. These petitions and related materials are available for public inspection at the Town Planner's Office, Town Hall, Room 204, and through the public agenda at the Town Plan and Zoning Commission Agenda under link follows. Persons who require an accommodation to participate in the public hearing should contact the Town Planner at eight six zero six six five eight five seven eight or Town Planner at newingtonct.gov, not less than twenty-four hours before the public hearing. Submitted Paul Dixon, Town Planner. This ran in the legal ad in the Rare Reminder, August 14th and August 21st, 2025, and the signs were posted at the site per the regulations.
That's all the signs. Do you want to read our procedure rules or?
Got them up there.
Even though we've never seen the following, but.
They're not in there, so I think we can.
Okay, we're going to go ahead. All right. I'll turn it over to you. If you could introduce yourself, please, with a name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I do, what I just handed out was emails I provided to Mr., documents I provided to Mr. Dixon earlier this morning and a few days ago. The first is a handout that's meant to guide our architectural presentation, the presentation of our architectural plans. The second, our elevations we submitted in our supplemental materials. And then the third is a a brief memo written by Mr. Hesketh, our traffic engineer, that we submitted with our supplemental materials. My name is Andrew Moran. I'm an attorney at Hinckley Allen in Hartford, twenty Church Street. Joining me tonight is our civil engineer, Daniel Ville. He's from Zuvik Inc. out of Rocky Hill. For our traffic consultant, we have Mr. Scott Hesketh of F.A. Hesketh and Associates from East Granby. Our building designer is Mr. Pat Snow. He's from Centerpoint Apartments in Cromwell. He's also the manager of Kits Lane Apartments LLC. For code and fire safety, we have Mr. Joseph Verstig of Verstig Associates in Pornton. Before jumping into everything, I'd just like to offer a quick thank you to Mr. Paul Dixon. There's been a lot of work and collaborating between our offices prior to this event, so I'd just like to thank him. In terms of procedural compliance, notices were published in the Rare Reminder on the 14th and the 21st. We posted our public hearing notice sign on the 14th, August 14th. And we sent, the town sent notice letters to about us on August 14th as well. Briefly, a little bit about the the application process to date. Our wetlands permit was approved on April 15th, 2025. We had a pre-application meeting with town staff on June 30th, which led to our July 2nd, 2025, application. It included a narrative application package, an affordable housing needs memo, and civil and architectural plans. We received staff comments on August 7th. We revised our plans and provided responses to each of the staff comments in the August 21st supplemental materials that we previously submitted. So a little bit about the site. Can you do the next slide, please? So the property is four contiguous lots, just shy of six acres in the Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Existing uses, two dilapidated vacant, single-family homes with detached garages. As I, as I mentioned, there's wetlands in the east. Now, our plan proposed no direct impact, just some work required is necessary within the upland review area. So our wetlands permit, we got that on April 15th, 2025. There's a diverse variety of neighboring uses. There's restaurants, grocery stores, gyms, various commercial uses, as well as a mix of single-family and multifamily residential uses. Now, the application you have before you tonight is site plan approval under Connecticut General Statutes, Section eight dash thirty G. The statute provides in relevant part that if a proposed residential development will preserve thirty percent of the units for forty years for households earning eighty percent and sixty percent of statewide median income. Then zoning commissions can only deny if it receives evidence that the development will cause a substantial public health or safety concern that clearly outweighs the need for additional lower-cost units in the town. And further, that those health and safety reasons cannot be addressed by reasonable changes to the site plan. And concerns can also be addressed through approval conditions, which which happens quite frequently. Mr. Dixon, the next slide, if you could, please. So just briefly, on affordable housing need in Newington. On the Department of Housing's 2024 ten percent list. There's thirteen thousand two hundred nineteen housing units in Newington. Seven hundred thirty-one are rental assistance units. Five hundred nineteen have CHFA mortgages. Thirty-six were deed restricted. So nine point seven three percent overall of Newington's housing stock met the statute's definition of affordable. As of 2004, that number was five point eight percent of about 12,000 dwelling units total. Overall, the past twenty years, the number of dwelling units has increased eight percent. But percentage of units counted on the ten percent list has only risen about three point nine three percent. In our affordable housing need memo material that I submitted earlier in July, we included excerpts from the 2021 eight thirty J Affordable Housing Plan and also excerpts of the Plan of Conservation and Development that speak to Newington's need for more lower-cost affordable housing. So our initial presentation tonight is going to be less than an hour. We have a lot to cover, so I'd request that everyone hold questions till the end. Mr. Dixon, next slide, please. So the Perouse Residential Program here is going to be forty units divided into ten rows of townhouses. Of the forty-two, of the forty units, thirty-seven will be two-bedroom units, and three will be three-bedroom units. In terms of the affordable units, there's going to be twelve total. Eleven of the thirty-seven two-bedroom units will be affordable, and one of the three, three-bedroom units will be affordable. In terms of square footage, the two-bedroom units will range from one thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet to one thousand six hundred seventy square feet. The three-bedroom units will be uniform of about fourteen hundred square feet. Schedule A of our affordability plan lists minimum finishes, amenities, qualities, and all the units affordable or market will be identical in those respects. The affordable units are dispersed evenly throughout the plan. In fact, they're designated, the affordable units are designated on our site plan. A bit about the income and rent limits, if you could do the next slide, please. The two-bedroom units that are reserved for those earning eighty percent of the AMI, which in Newington is about eighty-nine thousand dollars. There'll be about five of those two-bedroom units, and the max rent for those will be about eighteen hundred dollars. The two-bedroom units reserved for those earning sixty percent of the area median income or approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars a year will be six of those units. And the max rent for those will be about fifteen hundred dollars. And then the three-bedroom unit will be reserved for those earning eighty percent of the AMI or approximately hundred three thousand dollars, and I'll be one of those units with a max rent of about twenty-two hundred dollars. Market rate units, the two bedrooms will rent for approximately two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars a month, and the three bedrooms will be about two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars a month. We have one hundred nine parking spaces total. The total ratio is about two point seven two. The affirmative fair market housing plan, we're required to market these units across the region to minorities and groups least likely to apply. Includes newspaper notices not only in Newington, but about municipalities and the later, greater planning region itself. The next slide, please. So a bit about why this is an appropriate location for a multifamily development. It's approximate, as you can see, just point two miles from grocery stores, gyms. There's a variety of commercial uses at the one ninety-two Kits Lane Shopping Plaza. It's very close, only point one miles from a CT Transit bus stop. It's right next to Joey Garlic's. It's within a quarter mile from other multifamily developments, a bit further down south. I called out the Glen Oaks condos there. And as it is situated right now, it's a, it's a very underutilized parcel. And with that, I'd like to call up my colleague, Pat Snow, to discuss the site concepts and a little bit more about the design.
Good evening, Commissioners. Patrick Snow.
Address.
Oh. Resident, one ten Court Street, Cromwell, Connecticut. I haven't had an office building there since 2000. I've been involved in a bunch of, a lot of developments in the Newington area and the surrounding area. I've been in business for thirty-plus years. For the first half of my career, it's either remodeling or single-family residences. After 2008 happened, I kind of adjusted for to, or single families to doing more multifamilies. I believe this proposed community is designed as a neighborhood. When I say that as a neighborhood, it's just, it's designed as if people would live there and sell there, sell and own there. It's a rental community. One of the bigger attributes I like to say is all the units are designed where they have a garage that you enter into your, into your home. If you're looking around at different rental products in different markets throughout the state and throughout this local area, you see them where the parking garages are out. There's big parking lots. They're walking through, they're walking through hallways. As everyone knows here, if you've lived in an apartment, as good as insulation is between floors, you're always hearing your neighbors. I'm trying to make this community to be more as if a step between a homeowner and a renter, so the other way, renter to a homeowner. But they're going to be living as if they lived in the townhouses that we've seen built throughout the town and throughout the state. So I think this product is unique, and it's something that off, that could offer to current or future residences here, a different type of product and rental that will bring more people to the town. And as far as the affordability, of course, that's something that every, every town needs. I see some of the rents that are out there. I even get shocked in some, some cases. So the packet you have in front of you. The first picture is a project we just finished in Berlin, Connecticut. It'll be very similar to this. This is not an exact rendering as, as the buildings change a little bit. Some of the things that are the same are going to be the metal roof. I will do that along the front to break up some, some of the buildings. The different style of sightings and the different color of sightings, I think adds a nice feature to the neighborhood. It brings a, not something that you see as just one color and one big building, so we have some steps in and out. There'll be cedar-style shake final siding. The, the.
Yep, I put it up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
As you go through, if you just wouldn't mind telling me next one and I'll.
Okay. So anyway, so a different style of siding and material to give it more of a texture and more of a home, homeownership feel, it's not a rental community feel. Okay, if we go to the the next, the next page is, is going to be going through each of the unit styles. In, in the buildings, there's two units, four units, and some of the buildings were larger, larger style of units. And the first, first one I'd like to comment on is that the three-bedroom units have two-car garages. So if you see that in the, in units one and units two, which is also what I'll call building one. The back on these type of units, most of them will be full basements. So it does offer, again, something you don't see a lot in apartments, is areas for storage. Things like bicycles, things like if you have guests or just Christmas trees, et cetera, that, that will be more towards, towards a homeownership style. The, the units are proposed to all be built with energy efficiency. So these are all going to be electric. We've worked with the power company and different hers raiders to get the, the best insulation value, the best performance on appliances, the best performance on heat pumps. They do offer some rebates, which we will be taking advantage of, but in exchange for those rebates, we'll get a higher quality. An electrical, it's the same thing with the electrical appliances. The units will all have granite countertops and the interior. As far as the.
Page two.
Is, here's a good sampling of the interior. All of them will have two and, two and a half to three and a half bathrooms. And our thinking in the design process there is if you have a situation where it's a roommate situation, or potentially if it's a too unrelated, that they, everyone has their own bathroom to share, which, which again creates a more unique and blend of people who could be attracted to these units in, in unit laundries. There's also a common in every unit, so no one has to go to another source for laundry. Everything is in unit laundry. So if you want to go to, I can go, I'll go through these quick. They're all very similar, so if there's any questions at the end, we're happy to do it. But as, as we go through each building style here, units three through six. Again, same thing, we're breaking up with the metal roofs, different style of material. We have not finalized the color selection yet. All I can say is there'll be contrasting colors, so they won't all appear the same. And the second page. In kitchen styles here, they differ each one. Oh, and the other thing I forgot to mention, they all have decks or outside recreation areas. And there'll be a solid fencing, vinyl fencing between each unit, so if you're out on your deck, it creates a private space for you that you don't, you will not see your neighbor looking across or looking back and forth. So E is a, is a units twenty-six and twenty-seven. And as I did forget to mention, there's two ADA-style units here. Those unit styles will not have a garage in the front, but they will have as a master bedroom on the first floor. On the second floor, there will also be a bedroom with a bathroom in case there's a need for a live-in nurse, or if there's an older person who can't get up the stairs, visiting grandkids, visiting family, so there'll be a separation where we'll make it, it's nice to visit, and so they're not sharing a bathroom. So not doing these, the kids can have their own area and the current resident, if there is a need for someone with a bedroom on the first floor, to be able to be separated. So we did take that into account as well. Page G, units sixteen to twenty. If you look all the way to the right, that is the handicap unit, like you see, there's no garage on that unit, so that would be the style of unit there for the ADA. Go to unit H. And then, so then, unit I is next. These are, again, we're all, I'll get repetitive and I'll try to keep this short. I could say the same things, but all the units are the same quality, the same materials will be used. There'll be no differentiation between what's a market rate and a non-market rate unit. If you didn't know it, you would never be able to identify which one is which. As far as that, I mean, I could go through the other styles of units, but like I said, they're all the same style. And I would, I would conclude my presentation with that unless there's something I missed, Andrew. Oh, they, oh, okay. One, one thing just to, for building materials, as far as any fire codes or fire areas, we do, we will be complying with all the codes. We have a firewall between each unit, which will meet a UL thirty rating, and we will also have any fire, fire-rated plywood where the firewall beats the ceiling, or the ceiling and the roof on, between each section. So everything we do will be fire and safety rated. And the, and the location is one point five miles from a firehouse, so very close if there's any ever. Hopefully, there never is an emergency, but if there is, we're very close to get that done.
All right, next, Mr. Daniel Ville is going to talk about our site plan and some of the engineering aspects of the application.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Daniel Ville with Zuvik Inc. of Forty Cold Spring Road, Rocky Hill, representing the applicant. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. Been working Connecticut for about twelve years doing site design, utility work, transportation work. So with regards to this property, we've, we've engaged the MDC and confirmed availability of water and sewer service to the site, so utilities are available to provide for the the, the uses that Pat described. We talked about parking. There's a hundred and nine parking spaces on the site. The ratio is two point seven per unit, so that's a, that's a substantial amount of visitor parking as well. All the units have the garages. We've also met the EV charging standard by making two hundred forty volt power available for phase two chargers in all the units. The, the community mail is in the northeast portion of the site adjacent to the visitor parking, and it is is accessible in near vicinity to the ADA units. So there's short-term parking available to make your, your mail collections. The site, some of the site features include internal sidewalk for pedestrian circulation, and there's also a sidewalk available to get down to Kits Lane, and we're proposing a crosswalk at Kits Lane to make the, the Aldi lot, for example, accessible. We, can I, can we skip to the next plan? I think is the landscape plan. Yeah, okay, great. We talked about utilities. The site includes sanitary sewer water and electric, all underground. The, there will be fire hydrants internal to the site. There's been some, some correspondence with the fire chief over the last week or two since you received the application. So there is, there are plans to locate hydrants to the satisfaction of the fire chief. His, his comments are, are noted and will be incorporated. We also, we also provided a lighting and photometric plan. The lighting on the site is dark sky compliant. The, the pictures are all full cutoff, so there will be no spill over onto neighboring sites. And then for landscaping, you can. And then for landscaping, you can see a variety of materials. There's plantings surrounding the wetlands, which were provided at the, you know, request of the wetlands commission, the conservation commission, excuse me. And its consultant, so those plantings are within the upland review area are approved by the commission. So they will not, it will not be changed during the course of this application. The blue areas are for snow storage, so we identified a number of areas throughout the site where snow can be stored. In the event of large, you know, large storms, so that snow can be transported to those locations using specialized equipment if needed. The impervious coverage of the site is twenty eight percent after development. And that stormwater is collected and conveyed through an underground, you know, storm sewer. There's detention system located at the front of the site to the north of the proposed driveway. Underground detention will reduce the flows off the site to reduce any impact, well mitigate any impact to to downstream. Recipients of the stormwater from this site. So the the storm system was designed to contain and convey the one hundred year storm. And and every theoretical storm below it. We've also evaluated emergency vehicle access, next slide please. Emergency vehicles, we were provided the. Truck twenty one by the fire marshal, which is one of the largest trucks, I guess, in their fleet. So we we modeled the turnaround of this vehicle at the rear of the site. And as you can see, you know, I've modeled it. To conservatively make a three point turn at the rear of the site. The drivers in reality can do much more than than the simple maneuver shown here. We've also evaluated it in three dimensions, so there was some concern about the. The grading of the southern turnaround. So we evaluated that the trucks would not bottom out as they reach over the curb and and navigate the the sag curves and so forth. The fire staff, I don't remember if it was the chief for the fire marshal, also commented on the. The they requested additional profile, which we have evaluated. And we can submit a supplemental materials as needed, so. So fire safety was 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 evaluated throughout the design process. Lastly, there's a sedimentation and erosion control plan. Okay, not depicted here, but discussed with staff in between and. And and since updated. We we have provided washout and stockpile areas. We've relocated silt fencing and of course, the erosion and control plan as shown in the application was accepted by the conservation commission. So the wetlands, the the impact to wetlands is appropriately mitigated with this plan. Some of the downstream elements can be revised at the at the request of the commission. And that wraps up my presentation of the site features. And in my professional opinion, the development can be built without adverse impact to public health and safety.
Up next, Mr. Scott Hesketh of FK Hesketh and Associates is going to discuss his traffic report.
Good evening. For the record, Scott Hesketh, firm of F A Hesketh and Associates. I am a principal of that firm. In terms of qualifications to sit here, I have a bachelor's of. Engineering from the University of Detroit, a master's civil engineering from the. University of Minnesota, and I am a licensed professional engineer here in the state of Connecticut. I am the author of the June twenty third, two thousand and twenty twenty five. Traffic impact report, which has been submitted in support of this application. We've been asked to take a look at the traffic impacts of the proposed development on the surrounding roadway network. And in order to do that, we've researched the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation in the town of Newington. And also conducted manual attorney movement counts of our own. Typically, the Department of Transportation conducts counts on all state highways and many local roadways. Unfortunately, they didn't have any traffic volumes for us on Kits Lane in the vicinity of the site. So we did arrange for the installation of an automated traffic volume counter. During April of two thousand twenty five to record the traffic volumes on a daily and hourly basis across the site frontage. Based on those counts, Kits Lane is carrying about four thousand three hundred vehicles a day. On average, with the morning peak hour of about two hundred, morning peak peak hour of two hundred eighty seven trips. And that occurred during a nine o'clock hour. An afternoon peak hour, volume of seven hundred and eleven vehicles was observed. And a Saturday peak hour volume of three hundred ninety seven vehicles was observed at that location. In addition, we had manual attorney movement counts conducted at the intersection of Kits Lane and the Aldi's site driveway. Which is the location of our proposed site driveway. Those counts were also conducted during April of two thousand twenty five. And they were conducted during the morning, afternoon and Saturday peak periods. Copies of the manual attorney movement council included in the appendix in our report. We use those two sets of data. As the basis of the background traffic volumes for this for this proposed development. We got in touch with the Office of the State Traffic Administration and the town to determine if there are other developments in the area, which. Might have been reviewed and approved, but not yet generating traffic. So that we could add that traffic to the the roadway network. No specific developments were identified, so we didn't have to worry about that. We did use a one and a half percent per year growth rate to a design year of two thousand twenty eight. And based on conduct counts in in. In the vicinity, which indicated an annual growth rate of about one point two percent over the last, over the last number of years. So we have the background traffic volumes adjusted to a year of two thousand twenty eight as the basis of our of our analysis. In terms of the trip generation of the of the proposed development. We're proposing forty units of. Of apartment or rental units here. We use the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report. It's a standard engineering reference, which allows us to estimate traffic volumes at a proposed facility based on counts conducted at existing facilities. Throughout the country. Included within the ITE database is land use code two one five, which is single family attached housing developments. Based on that report, the proposed forty units here has a trip generation potential of about. Two hundred and eighty eight trips on a daily basis. That'd be a hundred and forty four entering and a hundred and forty four exiting. We're projecting a peak hour during the morning of nineteen trips. Five entering, fourteen exiting, a peak hour of twenty three trips during the afternoon peak hour. With thirteen entering and ten exiting movements. On Saturday, we're projecting about three hundred and fifty trips on a daily basis. With the peak hour volume of thirty two trips, which is fifteen entering and seventeen exiting movements. We projected the traffic to the roadway network based on. The observed background traffic volumes and where we thought people would be looking to go to. We project about sixty percent of the site traffic to and from the north along Kits Lane to make easy access to the Berlin Turnpike. We projected about twenty percent to the south along Kits Lane. Actually, we had twenty percent of the entering traffic arriving from the south and thirty percent of the exiting traffic departing to the south. And we had ten percent of our site traffic going across the street to Aldi's. And then exiting movement and twenty percent of our entering traffic coming from Aldi's. And the reason is the Berlin turnpike's got the median down the center and it's much easier to. If you want to go south, you really have to go up to the north or all the way to the south, the kits to. Or but if you want to return to the site, if you're traveling north on the Berlin turnpike, you can. Either come north on Kits Lane or make a right through the through the Aldi supermarket. And perhaps should be doing some shopping on the way, so that would be convenient for you. Based on those distributions, we distributed the site generated traffic. And our office conducted capacity analysis calculations at the intersection of Kits Lane, the Aldi's driveway and our proposed site driveway. We did so for the morning, afternoon and Saturday peak hours. And I noticed there's a typo in my report because I said BM peak hour twice. The results of the analysis indicate that all movements at the intersection operate at level service B or better. During the. During all peak hours under the background conditions, under the combined traffic volume conditions, all the movements will operate at a level of service B or better. During those peak hours, with the exception of the eastbound approach, which is the Aldi's site driveway. Which will operate at a level of service C with an average delay of about fifteen seconds. And I'll let the commission know that the split between level service B and C for an unsignalized intersection is fifteen seconds, so. One could say that all the movements are operating at a level of service B. Those are exceptional levels of service and there should be no difficulty in vehicles entering or exiting the site in a safe and efficient manner. We had the opportunity to review the intersection site distances at the proposed site driveway location. The site distances, looking to the north, we have in excess of four hundred and fifty two feet of site distance. In order to achieve that, we'll have to do a little bit of grading on the site. There is. The site is upgrade of Kits Lane. And so when the driveway goes in, we'll have to remove some of that, some of that earth so that we have a nice level path for vehicles, for people to look. Looking in in the southbound direction, we have an excess of four hundred and ninety six feet of site distance. Kits Lane extends an uphill about six percent in that location. You can actually see much further than that. But the site distances I've presented to you. Meet the minimum intersection site distance requirements for the eighty fifth percentile speeds. On Kits Lane, which were measured at forty one miles an hour and forty five miles per hour at the proposed site driveway. Location, so according to the ASHTO and ConDOT standards. We could meet the minimum site distance requirements at that location with a little bit of grading and removing of some vegetation. Looking to the north. We also had the opportunity to review accident data from the University of Connecticut Crash Data Repository. They are the keeper of all accident data in the state of Connecticut. Over the last three year period, there have been. And recorded accidents on Kits Lane from the Berlin Turnpike to the. All the way down to Deming Street. Five of those accidents occurred at the Berlin Turnpike. And there were no recorded accidents at the intersection of Kits Lane and the Aldi's Aldi's driveway over that three year period. So we had presented all this information into our report, which has been submitted in front of the commission to the commission. We did receive comments from town staff. They asked us to take a look at a couple of things. In terms of the intersection site distance, they asked us to provide a roadway profile. Demonstrating that that intersection site distance can be obtained. We have submitted a roadway sightline profile plan, which indicates the intersection sightline profile. They asked us to present on that plan the stopping site distances for both northbound and southbound traffic. On Kits Lane and those those site distances are are also provided on the plan. Town staff also asked us to take a look at the decision site distances. Something a little bit different than intersection site distance and stopping site distance. That's something that we don't often look at. In fact, in thirty five years, it's the first time I've ever been asked to take a look at decision site distance. Fair enough. When there's a complicated intersection, whether there's vertical curves, horizontal curves, exit ramps. Lots of things going on, vehicles moving in multiple directions, decision site distance might be something worth looking at. Again. We review the intersection site distances. Those are presented on the plan. Based on the information we had the other day, we had about eight hundred and twenty feet of decision site distance for northbound traffic. About five hundred feet of decision site distance for vehicles traveling in the southbound direction. According to the ConDOT, the the five hundred feet is good. They suggest perhaps nine hundred and twenty feet of decision site distance for northbound traffic. But this is an existing roadway kits. The roadway is there. It's been in place and operating for for many, many years. As indicated by the accident data, it doesn't appear to be a a safety issue at that location. I was out there earlier today and I did measure in excess of eight hundred and seventy seven feet. Of site distance, I went all the way back to the top of the hill. And I could and wheeled it off at eight hundred and seventy seven feet. I probably could have gone to the full nine hundred feet. That would require removing of some of the branches of the of the trees overhanging the roadway. I'm not sure that's something that we necessarily want to do, but if the commission decides that nine hundred feet is the right number. I'm sure we can certainly satisfy that number. They also, the staff also asked about the. Potential for an installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon for the proposed crosswalk at the site driveway. Again, we looked at the site distances for vehicles approaching the intersection. We have an excess of five hundred feet of site distance for southbound traffic. You can see someone standing at either end of the crosswalk from in excess of five hundred feet. And for southbound direction and again, over eight hundred feet in the northbound direction. You can certainly see and be seen by someone crossing at that location. I believe that's more than enough, so I don't believe the R RFBs are necessary. We'll leave that up to the commission. We also should take in the note that north of the intersect, north of this particular site, there's a four way stop sign controlled intersection. Of Kits Lane and Street and the shop, stop, stop and shop driveway. So all vehicles approaching this site from the north do so. Starting at a zero miles per hour within a relatively short distance of the site. So although they do main, perhaps maintain accelerate to forty one miles per hour in the southbound direction. By the time they get to this site driveway, they certainly start at zero. And the interest site distances for a speed of zero are effectively zero. So there's a range between zero and the site distance numbers that I've presented to you. We believe we have more than sufficient site distance for all of the applicable standards. And based on our review of the roadway conditions, the existing traffic volumes. The projected site generated volumes, the levels of service. It's our professional opinion that the. Local roadway network has sufficient excess capacity to accommodate the additional traffic volumes to be generated by this development. And that the site generated traffic from this development will not pose a safety hazard, health or safety risk to the to the general public. And I will be here for the remainder of the evening if the commission has any questions at the appropriate time. This time I'll hand it back over to. Our attorney.
And last up tonight is a Mr. Joseph Verstig from Verstig Associates. He's going to discuss fire safety and code compliance.
Good evening. My name is Joe Verstig. I'm a principal of Verstig Associates located in Torrington, Connecticut. You have my June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five memorandum to the commission. You also have my CV. Just a point of information for those that do not have access to my CV. Including my years of service in the state fire marshal's office and private practice. I have forty, over forty years of applying building codes, fire codes and accessibility standards throughout Connecticut. United States and internationally on behalf of the International Code Council, as well as the National Fire Protection Association. I'm a licensed building official and certified fire marshal, both in the state of Connecticut. As my memo says, I reviewed the site plans and the development plans, as well as the architectural floor plans and elevations prepared for this project. And determined them to be compliant with the two thousand twenty one international residential code portion of the two thousand and twenty two state building code. The significant aspect is that the state statute twenty nine two ninety two, which authorizes the fire safety code. Specifically states that the fire safety code shall not be applicable to one and two family dwellings. The state of Connecticut has taken that a step farther and included townhouses. And that's what these projects are, townhouses. They're attached one family homes under the international residential code. So the fire code, which contains the requirements for fire department vehicle access. Does not apply to this project. So there's no standard for fire department vehicle access in the state of Connecticut. So there's no standard for fire department vehicle access in the state of Connecticut. Because it's in the fire code and the fire code specifically does not apply to one or two family homes and townhouses. Now, having said that, you'll notice in the memo that we did look at. The fire department vehicle access requirements in the fire code as a metric. And this. Fire department access plan that was described earlier to you does in fact comply with the requirements of the fire safety code. If they were applicable, which they're not. So there is compliance. Um, in the fire safety code. Um, as it comes from the International Code Council, there are requirements within that document for the placement. Of fire hydrants and water flow. Those have been deleted by the state of Connecticut. So even if this were a project, a commercial project, under the requirements of the fire safety code, there are no fire hydrant requirements in the state of Connecticut. At the state level that a fire could enforceable by the fire marshal. Now, as you know, uh, if this project were to be approved, construction documents, the statute requires that construction documents be developed. And construction documents rather than a couple of pages you have here, uh, usually run anywhere from sixty to three hundred pages. And they detail every aspect of the project, not only the shingles, the outsiding, the windows, as well as doorknobs, toilets, piping materials. Everything is specified. Um, that's required to be submitted to the building official um by statute and by building code. Um, to demonstrate substantial compliance with the code. You just can't have them, uh, just can't hand in kind of close stat. You have to give. Your best foot forward and submit everything. The building official reviews it. If there's compliance, he issues a building permit. If there's no compliance. Then he doesn't issue a building permit. And if there's never compliance, then the building doesn't get built. So once the building permit is issued and construction begins, the building official does his required onsite inspections to make sure that. The code's incomplete, in compliance with the residential code compliant uh requirements as well as the. Uh, specifications and the approved plans. And only then, uh, do you get a certificate of occupancy to occupy the building. So. There are a number of checks and balances here to ensure that the building is compliant with the code. Uh, one issue that was raised had to do with the exterior decks in relation to the property line. Each one of these buildings, if you were to look down on them, uh, between adjoining properties, adjoining buildings. Um, there's a property line, if you will, whether it's a designated property line, is it? One person owned one property and the other person on the other. There's a property line. And if there's no actual property line, the code requires you to do. What's called an imaginary property line where you you just draw it between the buildings and you continue it out infinitum. So the issue is that some of these, or the question was raised, and some of these where there's decks. You will see the flat line of the building all parallel at the back, all of the um. All of the units are in a singular plane across the back and some of them have decks that project out and they're. Right on the property line, the imaginary lot line. And the question was, did we evaluate that? And the answer is absolutely, we evaluated that for compliance. And and the requirement uh in the building code only applies to walls and parts projections like eaves and overhangs. Uh, bay windows uh in proximity to that line. It does not apply to decks. And it would not apply to a fence on that property line at the deck. So we've evaluated that. Um, that's all I have. I will be around for questions, should you have any. Oh, in my professional opinion, sorry, probably the most important part, that this proposed residential development does not result in an adverse impact. With substantial public interest in health, safety or welfare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, uh, at the start, I promised to keep it under an hour and I'm gonna hold to it, but if you would just bear with me for. Pretty darn close. Um, just a few closing remarks. Um, reasons why this should be approved. We have attractively designed buildings uh that will provide much-needed housing. They're gonna be safe, code compliant. Uh, you heard Mr. Snow talk about energy efficiency, modern living. Uh, the two thousand twenty Plan of Conservation and Development and the two thousand twenty-one Affordable Housing Plan, which are the most recent in Newington. All recognize the need for more affordable housing. Uh, the team of experts have opined that the proposed community will be safe. And I just recall there the eight thirty G denial burden under the state law is. Can only be denied if it poses a public health or safety concern that clearly outweighs the local and regional need for lower-cost housing. And can't be addressed by reasonable changes. We respectfully submit that that's not present here. We we believe it's safe. Uh, we respect, uh, we request approval without all, uh, we're we're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have and thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. I'm actually gonna turn it to the staff. Um, and the staff is gonna um present. What the facts that they need to tell us and then you're actually have a chance to rebut that.
Okay.
And then we'll go to the public.
Yep, to the commissioners and to the applicant. Yep, so um, again, Paul Dixon, town planner, uh, for the record. Um, so staff is in the process and hasn't completed the review of the updated site plan submitted last week on eight twenty and the comments. Uh, the response submitted on eight twenty-one, um, in addition to the updated traffic engineer, uh, engineers. Uh, comments and the site plan profile that was uh submitted um yesterday into you time. Uh, while staff is completing their review, we have some specific areas for the TPZ's consideration and guidance for any additional information that is required. For your review of the application. Um, what Eric Hinckley is hanging out to you now are is exhibit uh one, two and three. So this is the, um, so I'll kind of go to that. So staff comments included a statement. Um, that requested an evaluation by qualified professionals to provide the current level of noise experienced at the property line. Uh, the southern boundary. Um, the applicant referenced um. That the required compliance of neighborhood of neighboring properties is with the noise ordinance of chapter two nineteen. And as indicated, that is not incumbent upon the applicant to anticipate or mitigate noise that arises to the level of being a nuisance. Um, the proposed development is proposed ten feet away from this property line. Uh, again, this is the construction yard to the south. So what you'll see is I've included chapter two ninety-one of the Newington Code of Ordinances, which is the Newington Noise Ordinance. I've included uh title twenty-two A sixty-nine of the regulations of the state of Connecticut, which is the DEP. Noise ordinance, which our noise ordinance is based on and our noise ordinance can't be less strict than the DEP's regulations. And the third item that I've included is a picture that shows the southern boundary line. That shows the uh existing property of the construction yard. And you can kind of see the equipment um that is located. On that yard and a lot of those would have things like backup alarms. So in chapter two ninety-one of Newington's noise ordinance. Um, it excludes the operation of backup alarms acquired by OSHA. Uh, so that is excluded and excluded in the Connecticut um title twenty-two A sixty-nine. So backup alarms operating next to this property would not be able to be addressed by the noise ordinance. Uh, the exemptions of the ordinance also have in our ordinance uh in section two ninety-one four. That by it's any noise. Generated by construction equipment operated during daytime hours. So that would need some interpretation. Um, our noise ordinance includes, you know, it talks about construction, what construction is, but it has this exclusion that says. Any operation generate of noise generated by construction equipment. So again, these are kind of to bring to your attention. Um, again, the aerial photograph, you can see again, the proximity to that southern property line. That's why the uh staff did ask uh the applicant to have a qualified professional um review it. That's something that if the commission would like, staff can pursue that as well, for look for a qualified en- uh engineer to review it. To kind of provide recommendations. Because again, the concern is the quality of life for our future residents in that location. Um, again, Newington's noise ordinance includes zone classifications based on the zones established in the zoning regulations. So this is a business zone. Business Berlin Turnpike and would assumably be a business zone for a noise generation. Title twenty-two A contains similar classification of noise zones, A, B and C. The class B maximum decibels emissions match the town's business zone. And the typical uses for the class B zones are listed in twenty-two A sixty-nine point two point four. And that's highlighted um in your copy. Uh, where multiple uses exist within a given zone, the least restrictive land use category for the emitter and receptor apply. Regarding the noise standards. So again, this is business zone to business zone. Uh, we do, you know, this is a residential use. From a planning perspective, we have not taken um the step to review the business Berlin Turnpike zone for residential uses. The PD zone, which is the closest to the uh Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. And it noted in your staff comments. I did note that, again, all those uses that are allowed in the Business Berlin Turnpike Zone are allowed in the PD zone. The PD zone just has residential pretty much added on to it. In that PD zone, um, it looks at, you know, larger setbacks as noted in the staff report. And again. The Newington zoning regulations do consider the impact of noise on residential uses. Uh, when I search the regulations in section three point eleven in business zones. When we permit apartments by special permit in the business buildings. We require that soundproofing shall be designed and installed to isolate the normal sounds of business activity to the apartments, to the apartments. So again, this is something that, again, eight thirty G, the application process. The requirements of the zoning regulations are not a sole reason for denial, not a sole reason for reviewing the application. But looking at the noise ordinance, again, that is one of staff's um concerns. And that's why we've kind of presented you with the noise ordinance tonight. Again, just because it was referenced in the response to comments that the noise ordinance would be pretty much the governing document. That would how these two properties would relate to each other. Uh, another item is the Erosion Sentimentation Control Plan. Um, that the applicant did note that they were planning to update. Um, staff comments, uh, were were omitted from the uh response to the uh, from the applicant's response to our comments. Uh, and I've included, I actually have a copy of staff comments. If you'd like to hand those out. Um, item two of those staff comments, you know, we raised some concerns with a lack of soil materials, uh, soil pile, which. The applicant's engineer did note tonight that they would be updating their plans. We also asked kind of questions about where the concrete washout areas would be. Um, and review additional site perimeter controls along the northern property line. And identify the overland runoff and evaluate control measures in critical areas of runoff concentration. Particularly in the areas of steep slopes and cuts um next to the property lines. So again, the. The erosion sedimentation, the two thousand twenty-four DEP Connecticut guidelines for social, so soil erosion and sediment control, if that's a mouthful. Uh, they highlight the responsibilities of the TPZ in regard to certifying that an adequate E and S plan has been submitted. Uh, we have confidence that the applicant will be able to provide that plan. We just have not um seen it yet and will continue to work with the applicant. Um, we have additional comments regarding the property topographic survey and we have the town engineer tonight who can kind of address those. Um, same thing, the sightlines, uh, again, we just received the profile for the sightlines. Uh, we have not had time to review those uh fully and I haven't had time to review those with the local traffic officer as well. And the proposed site crosswalk and the pedestrian connectivity to the site, again, it was mentioned with the RFFB. Uh, potential on that. Again, the concern from staff with the eighty-fifth percentile at forty-five and forty-one miles per hour, as the traffic engineer did note. That people are picking up speed rather quickly uh down on that way and is again, is a unanticipated crossing. Um, in that area, people aren't kind of used to it. And that was the recommendation. Again, we will review what the applicant has submitted as far as the sightlines. And their additional information. And I think uh the last item is kind of the vehicle access and emergency operations. Uh, so the fire chief has expressed some concerns regarding the operation of fire department equipment. Uh, it is a twenty-foot wide proposed roadway. It did show, um, you can see on the site plans that were submitted, they do have a turning plan that shows that all within the site. And the fire chief is here tonight and can address any concerns regarding that. And uh, the applicant's engineer, as they noted, is has been working with the town regarding the locations of the hydrant. Um, the one item that should be noted in the plan set that was submitted or say in the application set under um. Believe it was tab one of the general overview of the application. Uh, the applicant did notice, uh, you do lot, notice. Using NFPA thirteen sprinkler systems in the building. Um, conversations with the applicant afterwards, those are not planned onsite. Again, when they were talking about fire flows for the site. And that is just something to note that. It was in the application and just for the record that that would be proposed to be removed um from the application. So again, I have the town engineer, Chris Abidio, with me tonight and Jeffrey Traumer, the fire chief. And if I could hand it over to Chris Abidio. Oh, okay. So if I can hand it over to Chief Jeffrey Traumer.
Evening, Chief. Forty-eight minute left, Newington, Connecticut. Um, some of the concerns we have with the apparatus of movement within the complex. Um, I don't know, Chris. Or Paul, I mean, I'm sorry. Um, some of the turning radiuses actually bring the apparatus uh in the design plan of actually going over some of the curbing. Uh, some of the grass areas. Our concern is, uh, you know, uh. Creating damage to the tires, creating, creating damage to the apparatus. Yeah, other part is uh the turning radius, the hammerheads. Um. Some of the areas have snow pile that they're gonna be putting snow piles in. Our concern is there's gonna be a pitch in the uh turns. And in the wintertime or when that starts to melt, it's gonna become slippery. It also has a a pretty good pitch to it. Which can create an issue for us to to back the apparatus. Once that apparatus is in that complex, there's no other way. We have to go up to the hammerhead to make the 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 turnaround, but we can't pass each other. So the difficult part is some of the apparatus actually has to back out of that complex, which at some distances are close to two hundred feet. Uh, so it makes it a little bit difficult to maneuver in there. Uh, so. What we're trying to do is some of the hammerheads, my comments were to try to soften that a little bit. Make it more of a cul-de-sac type thing, so it would be easier for us to maneuver inside of it. Um. And uh, that's on both hammerheads. So it's not just on one side, it's on both sides. The other concern we have is on the side that's closest to the construction site. Uh, the slope or the pitch on the uh earth there makes it very difficult for us to operate. Since we can't get a truck back there, we can't put ground ladders back there very safely. The pitch of that some goes from zero to almost eleven feet up. Uh, that's a very steep pitch. You got snow, you got any type of rain back there, it's gonna be slippery. It makes it almost impossible for us to operate. So just some concerns that we have that we'd like to see, you know, addressed as part of the plans.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everybody. Chris Zavideo, town engineer. Uh, and for the record, I am both a licensed professional engineer and a licensed land surveyor. Uh, so my first and foremost comment for tonight is, we've just received these plans. We have not yet. Completed our staff review, so that's why you don't have a staff report. Uh, on that issue alone, I would recommend that we continue this application. To your next meeting. Uh, that said, uh, the little bit of review I've been able to do so far. One of the uh comments that came back from the applicant regarding the topographic survey. Uh, and this isn't, you know, the end of the world as far as the the whole site plan is concerned is, but it's certified as what's called a T-three topographic survey. Um, the response that came back was that uh the applicant feels this is adequate. And I do not. Uh, and I've said this before, so it's not a surprise to anybody. The reason I feel it is not is because the T-three is based on an aerial photograph, which this plan. States that it is based on an aerial photograph. Uh, and that is. Not, in my opinion, adequate for designing a complex. Now, this may come something on down the road if they get approved and I could accept that. But um, as it is on its own, if they would like to get the uh aerial photogrammetrist who actually ran the flight to certify this. Then I would back off on my comment about the T-three. Uh, as far as the land survey aspect of it. A surveyor is allowed to certify a plan to T-three if he has done the control for the aerial photogrammetry. But he is not responsible for the photogrammetry itself. And I think that's an important point and we tried to make this point in a meeting. We asked for additional uh field survey work in areas that we had concern. Especially along the southern boundary with the construction yard because we don't feel that this photogrammetric representation is exactly. Accurate to the ground surface itself. Um. So that's probably my my biggest complaint so far with what I've been able to review to this point. But I did take a quick look at some of the other. Uh, responses. Uh, some of the things Paul covered, so I won't beat the drum on that too much, like the E and S comments were um. Not addressed. Uh, they're going to get back to us on that. Um, there's a, there was a comment about the. Uh, desire for the town to have the part of Kits Lane that's going to have the new sewer line installed. Replaced curb to curb. Uh, that is part of our town code, not a zoning requirement, a town code requirement. Um, anytime a substantial part of the road is. Constructed or let's say all what it is damaged in the construction. Constructed or let's say all what it is damaged in the construction of a utility. Uh, we can require a curb to curb replacement of the surface. So. The area where this sewer main connects into the existing M B C sewer is as much as a twelve foot excavation. So by the time you get a trench box in there to build this thing safely. You've excavated the middle third of our road and I'm sticking to my guns as far as requiring curb to curb restoration on Kits Lane where the sewer main goes. We had a lengthy discussion about sightlines and Mr. Hesketh has begun to address that with his profile. Um. I'm I'm really not happy with the way it currently sits on the plan. That profile that uh we provided or was provided in the uh demonstration shows a very, very small. Uh, margin of error, so to speak. And another point that we discussed internally and have not had a conversation with the applicant about because this is today's work. Is the uh, the angle of that sightline to get that distance from the stop point on the driveway. If you look at the um, the plan there, you're looking over your shoulder through your passenger's head. Uh, potentially through the structural part of a vehicle between the front and rear window on the on the passenger side. To get that line, that alignment. Uh, realistically, a driver is going to look at an angle much less severe to that. And perhaps we need to change the arrangement of the driveway to provide a little better sightline to the side of a driver. Uh, this is again, new to these uh people. I don't like to spring this on you at a meeting, but this is, this came in today and we were looking at it today and so I'm bringing it up today. Uh, that's a, that's a pretty steep looking over your shoulder to get that kind of a of a sightline as shown here. And that profile just barely grazes the proposed contours of the ground. I think we determined it was something like two or three inches of uh distance between the the line shown. Maybe it's four inches. Now, that said, I set my lawnmower to three inches. So if we've got four inches of grass there, the sightline is obstructed. So this is something we're looking at today and perhaps we need to look at the grading plan a little bit to knock that hill down. And we certainly need to look at how far a driver can be expected to turn his head to see the sight distance that Mr. Hesketh has described they have there. Uh, and this is primarily for traffic coming south on Kits Lane. Um. I also want to stress that all of this is certainly things that staff can work out with uh Mr. Snow's design team as we go forward. But I do not think we should make it a uh, a decision this evening. Um. Grading on the uh, the sites, specifically the units on the south is something Chief Traumer uh pointed out and we concur with that. Uh, there's one point then, I could be wrong about this, but looking at when you're coming up that initial hill. If you're in firefighting gear and you're pulling a hose and you're coming up that grade. Right above your head is the deck. You you get to the point where you're coming up the hill and you're running into the deck. Now, if you've ever pulled a hose running length of distance, you're not looking up at a deck, you're looking down at the ground where your feet are. So firefighter contact with that structure, in my opinion, is a very likely possibility. So that's something I think we need to talk about later. Now, looking at my comments here, I think the rest of this is really stuff I think we should discuss offline with the applicant. Uh, sometime between now and your next meeting. Uh, just a lot of it is is minor details, I think they will clear up in their next revision of the plan. So I don't want to be really belaborate in a public forum. And so I think that was my comments.
Paul, you done? Yep, I think we're good.
Done. Everyone, back to you. Comment on their comments.
Yes, thank you, uh, Attorney Andrew Moore for the record. Do my best to go through generally each one and call up uh my colleagues as needed. But with first with respect to noise, this was an issue that came up at our original June uh meeting with staff. We agreed to add a eight foot tall fence um between the the units to the south and the southern property line. To help mitigate some noise. And just a brief review of the section eight dash thirty G standards. Uh, we we would respectfully submit that, you know, noise, although as a consideration, we. Provided the fence to to mitigate it is not a matter of public, a substantial public health and and safety concern. Falls more into the category of uh, convenience. We did, we did anticipate it, we did provide the fence, I just have to remind the commission of the eight thirty G standards. Um, and if looking at tab. Our site aerial, which is at tab nine of our July. Two thousand twenty five materials. It's the aerial I showed on the PowerPoint earlier on. Um, if if you look at the tab nine of of the original materials, you'll see the Glen Oaks condos. You know, maybe. A hundred, two hundred feet away from from the property and we're not aware of any um noise complaints or or anything. None of them have been brought to our attention, if they have been.
They're uh, just a point of comment on that, they're located vertically above this site by something in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say twenty five or thirty feet. Uh, which does a lot to attenuate noise.
Okay.
There's a vertical separation between the two properties.
We would submit that noise can carry upwards just as it does, but point taken about the the noise attenuation of the hill. Thank you. Um, there's no evidence suggesting the the uh construction equipment is is continuously being used on this parcel. Another point about erosion and sediment control. The point is well taken that stockpiling and silt fencing around stockpiling can be shown on, should be shown on the plan. This is something that can easily be addressed by an approval condition. We hear a little bit about traffic and pedestrian safety of those crossing Kits Lane. I defer to Mr. Scott Hesketh, who has testified that pedestrians can do so safely. Um, so I defer to his professional expertise, but in any event, as an applicant, we're entitled to a legal presumption. That motorists on Kits Lane are not going to drive recklessly. They will obey the traffic laws and they will look out for pedestrians. The T two survey issue. The, so this, there is staff concern whether um, this is another issue that was brought up at the original June two thousand. I'm talking, thank you. This was another issue that was brought up um during our June meeting. There was staff concern whether the, related with building the decks and the southern units. Whether the topography of the southern property line was accurate. We sent our surveyor back to collect additional data points on the southern property line. And along the street frontage where there there was areas of concern. That survey has been revised and was included in our supplemental materials. Um, and in a large vegetated site like this, almost six acres. It's it's normal to supplement a field data, field data with aerial data in this, in this instance. And just a last point about the T two survey. That we we could not find any uh requirement in in Newington's regulations that require a a T two survey. We have a, our, our, we have a licensed landscape architect who went out to visit the site, took his time preparing the survey. He has certified that is accurate. We defer to his expertise and experience generating the survey in the matter. The sightline profile. Um, again, we have testimony per from a professional traffic engineer. Uh, you know, an expert in traffic safety to to date, the only expert testimony in the record concerning. Traffic as a, as a unique issue. Saying that the sightline profiles are adequate, that they meet the state and federal ISD standards. Um. And to the extent there's suggestions that we exceed those state or federal standards. Uh, I I I don't think it's necessary, we can, we comply. So I I would defer to our traffic experts' testimony on that. And I do want to ask Mr. Daniel Ville to come back up here and just reiterate. Why the the site is safe from a fire truck maneuvering um perspective, please.
For the record, Dan Ville, I um. Can we show the uh, the turning movement plan, the most recently submitted? So Chief Traumer mentioned that um, there's, there's some concerns with with overhang and wheel paths. I'd just like to clarify that all of the wheel paths shown remain on the pavement in the turning movements displayed. And I I pointed out before that I've shown only one possible solution to navigate the site. The person behind the wheel has many options in terms of how they navigate it. Whether they may choose to make a five point turn instead of a three point turn, where they choose to place their vehicle. Um, the green lines, which may be a little bit confusing, are overhangs of the bumpers beyond the curb. And um, this is typical if you pull into a parking space and park up against one of those, one of those curb stops, those wheel stop. Um, you know, for to to nose over a curb, so that's, that's typical and it is displayed in the profile uh submitted. We've also adjusted the grading and created a second profile on the inside of the the curve. Um, we can submit this, we can submit this as a supplemental material. Um. A second profile on the inside of the exit curve at the southern turnaround. Which shows that the grades there are also traversable by the vehicles, the vehicle that was given to us, the design vehicle. We we welcome further discussion with the staff on this, on this topic and we can certainly uh. We can certainly look further into explaining or or displaying these these maneuvers.
Before you, before you, can you just, the chief also commented on the snow, so storage areas that would impede um is apparatus.
Um, as 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 a maintenance issue, the pavement will need to be remained cleared for the safety of the residents at all times. So it is our, it is, it is the, you know, the intent to keep the pavement clear throughout the season.
All right, thank you. Any more?
Uh, unless there's any more questions from members of the commission, I'm happy to defer to the rest of the public.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to the commission right now for questions. Mr. Harper.
Mr. Chairman, uh. This is actually a question on the engineer's point about the uh survey. And I'm wondering, uh, Chris, are you saying that if they include the L S signature on the plan, it would be the wrong party certifying? Uh, just to clarify.
Correct. An aerial photograph should be certified by an aerial photogrammetrist, not an L S. I would not certify an aerial photograph or map product from it under my own signature.
Is Mr. Tarbox the individual that conducted the aerial survey or?
It, you know. He is, but I, let let me say this.
Just trying to get the information.
Yeah, he, this, this is not something that was just based on aerial survey. He went to visit the site and and visit the site. Yeah, it's supplemental information, help fill in some of the gaps of, this is a a very vegetated site and accessibility is different, is is uh difficult in some respects.
And why, if you can answer this, why was the decision made initially to do the aerial? Is that a practice of the company or? Uh, this.
Dan Ville from Zubik for the record. So, so typically when we have a large, a large site to develop, it is, it is practical to use aerial survey as the overall basis for our topography. And it's a, it's a standard practice that we've used. And to to, you know, to achieve extra detail where it is required, we would do ground survey. Um, in these, in these heavily wooded sites with steep slopes, some, some of the access can be very difficult. And I would, I would say that there's actually more data collected from the sky than you might collect on the ground and still. Perhaps certify, but I am not the L S of record. I'm merely referring to our standard, you know, historical practices. Um, and again, I I would say the areas of concern, we have, we have uh, you know, collected extra data to. Reflect the the existing conditions to the current, to the current time period.
Okay, but to satisfy the engineer's concern, would you, are you in a position to resolve that? So we don't get into a. You know, this fight over a survey, this point.
I guess it would depend what the, we've already put a good foot forward with respect to after the June meeting. There were specific areas of, there was a specific area of concern along the southern property line. And along the frontage of Kits Lane. In in a spirit of a good faith and and trying to cooperate with with town staff, we did go back and confirm. Though, by taking additional data points along those areas of concern. To to the extent staff suggests that uh, you know, more shots or uh, data points need to be collected and. You know, on the far eastern site where nothing is proposed and it's just going to be. Remain raw land, I I don't think that's necessary or or warranted under the the purview here.
Okay, and I'd like to ask you a question on the uh, the site view or however you want to describe it as the traffic comes to a stop out of the project. As traffic heads down the hill, past the condominium. I pick, you can pick up a pretty good speed as you head downward. Um, I don't know that the the police would have any incident reports. I travel that road frequently. And I haven't seen any issues, not to say that issues haven't occurred currently, just the way things are without your project there. Um, so I guess the people, the police department keeps its incidents reports and would know, but. I'm thinking um, again, I understand your sensitivity to that and the added expense. My only concern is before you get to the stop sign that's currently there. It's a pretty short run, so if you're not paying attention to what you're doing, heading west. Um, that could be problematic. I don't know if a speed bump would be something that would satisfy us, that we wouldn't want to deal with that. Like the engineer would know better than I, uh, that would negate that or neutralize it. I don't know, but um, again, I haven't personally witnessed uh any police officers having to come to a site. Right near the grocery store, et cetera, there's a lot of traffic, as you can imagine. Coming west, the whole neighborhood of the south end that goes to Super Stop and Shop. My being one of them goes down that, that road. Um, the other quick question, Mr. Chairman, if I might, through you. Um, do these units have basements? And if not, why not? Is it economic consideration or a high water table concern?
The applicant actually said that they have basements.
Yeah, yes. Well, just just to clarify, I would say uh, majority have basements. But if you call bases like the property location we're talking about on the southern side. The garage is the basement because it comes into the garage and you come up to two stories of living. And then the back grade is at at that top of the first story of uh first, first four face. So I don't, I just want to be clear that it's a garage slash basement, but yes, there's storage areas below.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Chris Harper?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chairman. Uh, one of my uh consistent uh concerns with the, with these projects is fi- is is fire safety. And uh, I appreciate the fact that Chief Trauma is actually here uh along the presentation. I think in in my twenty some odd years, I think that's the first time I've seen that. Thank you, Jeff, for coming down. Uh. You have, you've mentioned first of all, you know, when talking about traffic safety, that you would take the word of your professional, Mr. Hesketh. And uh. And so in my, in in my, you know, thinking about this, I'd rather take the professional advice of the of Chief Trauma. As far as uh safety uh with the, with the apparatus. Uh, we've gone through this before and a lot of things. And uh, I don't see enough, should I say, previous, uh, enough hardpan. Uh, for the apparatus to do what it has to do, especially, especially the, you know, the two trucks. Uh, and uh, you know, it's a good thing we don't have a tiller. But uh, in in the meantime, I can often, I also see a problem. Uh, you know, just looking at it without being on the site, but as uh, as Chief Trauma said. Uh, you know, setting up a ladder, whether it's a one man evolution or two man. whether it's a one-man evolution or two-man, you know, 20 feet or whatever it is, around those buildings and the vegetation can be very dangerous. And I think that needs to be looked at. And the fact that, and this is really, I don't know how many people think of this, that the fact that, you know, you cannot have, you know, two pieces of apparatus actually pass each other is, to me, pretty dangerous. You get another call over there, especially for the truck. You know, you've got to get out of there. And I don't know whether it means, you know, spreading things out and, you know, another driveway or what. But I think we've got this. I like the project, I like the application, the idea of these affordable apartments. But there are a lot of things I don't like. I know there's some people shaking their heads over here, you know. But to me, this is not an apartment project like we've seen, let's say, at 515 Industry. You know, this is an affordable, partially affordable housing project that actually looks good. Okay? And, you know, it fits in with the woods there, but there are a lot of, there are some safety concerns that I have had. So that's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners?
I'm just saying, any comments I might have, the staff is going to be looking at it anyway. So wait till we hear back from them.
I'll check with Chris Minor online.
Yeah, check with Chris. All the questions I have have already been raised, and I'll wait for traumas to return. I have a couple of questions, actually, first one's on the staff. The picture that you gave us. If I'm reading this right, it looks like the owner of the south is encroaching on the property on the north, correct?
So I would refer to the applicant. Yeah, so that's an aerial photo. So again, on near map, again, it's as good as GIS, which is basically get it surveyed. And they do have a survey on the site. It does show, I believe, and the applicant can answer to this, that there is one tonx box that's either maybe encroaching over the line a little bit. They could answer that. And then there's a jersey barrier right along it. So I'd say, yeah, it's close to the property line. But I believe they have worked with the neighbor next door. And again, any encroachments, they would be working that out with the neighbor during construction.
And then, I guess, why isn't it incumbent upon the applicant to mitigate the noise and not the neighbor that's making the noise? I understand possibly new apartments going in and residents could complain. But they're not making noise, and we have noise owners in this town. So wouldn't it bear back to the property owner, where owns whatever a lot of...
So again, this is one of the questions that, you know, again, why we kind of brought it to your attention. Again, it was noted that, yes, the noise ordinance takes precedence in this case, that the backup alarms are exempt. So that is a concern that we have on other properties in town. The zoning officer can attest to that, and that's something we can't do anything about. Again, currently residential is not permitted in this zone. It's something we would look at, but that's something that the applicant, that the residents will face. And the other question about noise is, yes, if it exceeds the volumes, again, if it's not an exempt activity, it is the responsibility of that owner who does the admission. And again, it was kind of that concern, just to raise it, because noise is a health concern for those who live there. For people who live close to roads, close to, you know, construction yards, close to things like that, that is something that they will face. And that's kind of what I kind of highlighted too in the comments when I asked if Mr. Verceeg had reviewed it. And again, I think that's noted that that comes partially later. But that's kind of those questions to ask now, because we do not have standards within the zone for residential uses. So we are working within, again, a 30G, which says even if it's not a permitted use, it can go in, even if the setbacks, let's say 25, those don't apply. But we're looking at those health and safety factors. And again, it's the concern for those future residents and their health and those noise impacts to them. And that's just why we raise it. I'm not an acoustic engineer. No acoustic engineer has really provided information on it, but that's kind of why staff did raise that and whether the commission would like us to look into it further.
And then to the fire chief's comments, and actually, I think you're a professional, can you answer this question? To the best of my knowledge, vehicle width is 8'6". It can't exceed that, a special permit. So I don't know if fire trucks exceed that. I'm assuming they don't. 8'6", again, is a legal limit for a piece of equipment or any registered vehicle in state without a wide load permit. And we don't think we have that on our fire trucks. So if it's a 20-foot road, two trucks should be able to pass, and there's still three feet. And granted, not a lot of space, but there's still space. Am I correct in that or no?
You're correct, and to Mr. Fox's point. Although, and again, to reiterate, the fire department vehicle access requirements that are in the fire code, specify a 20-foot wide minimum roadway, specify a 13'6" minimum overhang, specify that the turning radius I have to satisfy the trucks being accommodated, along with a whole other series of requirements as far as sufficiency of the roadway to hold the vehicles up. The 20-foot and all of that is not required. It is completely 100% not applicable. So if we did not do that, we would be compliant with all Connecticut regulations. This was able to be done, it was a plus that was added in. If we cut out the turnarounds, the K-turns at the end, and force you to back up 250 feet, that would be totally compliant with code. And understand that the fire code in Connecticut is, and the building code in Connecticut, is adopted, put forth by the state fire marshal and the state building official in conjunction with the International Fire Marshals, with the Fire Marshals Association. There are representatives of the Connecticut Fire Chiefs Association. It's reviewed by the Codes and Standards Committee, which is a statutorily made-up committee of two architects and, I think, three engineers and a public member and a person from accessibility and two building officials and two fire marshals. And then it goes before legal review, before the Attorney General's office. Then it goes before public hearings. And then, and only then does it go before the legislature, which votes on it. So there's more than enough opportunity to raise these issues. And again, the fire code's requirements for fire department vehicle access specifically do not apply to this project. So any reference that, you know, we're not compliant with any specific point is mute, because we are compliant with all Connecticut regulations. Now, the 20-foot wide roadway as established by the codes is in fact there to provide for opposing vehicle traffic, as well as one fire truck parking and another fire truck having to drive around it and pass. So the 20-foot is a national standard, and it's being applied here in this project.
Thank you. I still, I'm still not, not all that happy. Regulations aside, in any work I did, you know, in my military service and career, and that has to do, not necessarily with a fire apparatus, but I would say of tanks and, you know, five-ton trucks and the things. You know, being a combat engineer, that was one of my fortes. And this is in the service, you know. And it's changed in combat, but, you know, here in country, we'd want a 26-foot roadway to do something like that. But I think it remains to be seen that, you and Mr. Snow, between you and Mr. Stone and Jeff Trauma, I think this can be worked out, because, you know, safety, I mean, and I have also. We can talk about the requirements and rules and laws. But to me, I think the person with the on-the-job training, I think, has an advantage. And, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to feel better about the fire apparatus safety.
I appreciate your position. But again, the rules and regulations of Connecticut that establish safety for buildings and fire department vehicle access are established in the code, keeping in mind they're not applicable to this project. So if we made the roadways 18 feet wide, took out the K-turns, provided excessively steep slopes that in any other commercial project would not be allowed, they're perfectly acceptable under the International Residential Code for one or two family dwellings and townhouses.
Let me do a bit. I don't want to make this something that it's not. The chief, I think, was pretty clear, and I'm going to speak to you, chief. I believe what you stated here, that your concerns could more than likely be addressed through comments. So I don't want to make this a bigger issue.
No, 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 and it was not my intent. It was just to reinforce the fact what the law is and what the law is not. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think the issue for the fire company as well is they don't want to be in a position to have to back out of a situation. There are a lot of issues as to why they don't want to do that.
And I don't disagree with that, but again, the road width would allow one truck to go by the other.
I understand the regulation. I'm just, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that is a concern.
Yeah, and if I could add, the K-turns at the ends, they were specifically provided simply because if the fire code did apply, which it doesn't, the requirement is that any roadway that has a dead end in excess of 150 feet, you have to provide a way for that fire truck to back out. So because these roads go in and stop, we had to provide the K-turns. Or we provided the K-turns to satisfy that fire code requirement.
If we back up, when you, I don't think you were here attorney more, but there was a pre-application for that, correct? At that point, if I remember right, it was a circular driveway. There was, it came right around. And that was changed by the welling commission, because they wanted the wetlands to feed in there. But the applicant didn't make this happen, the wetland commission made it happen. And the applicant said, okay, if we can't make it circle or half circle, we're going to build hammerheads so the apparatus can turn around. Again, I think it's something, if it does move forward, it could be worked out with the fire department.
Unless there's any other questions, we'll yield to the public.
No, as much as I know that you want to see this voted on tonight, I think we're going to have to postpone it, because we need to wait for comments from the engineer. You've got to get back to them for some more information. So there is a motion in our...
So, Mr. Chairman, what I recommend is to, again, the public is here to hear the public comments. Again, there might be additional public comments for the commission, and I know better than that.
Sorry, public. It is now the public's opportunity to come up and speak to us, whether you'd like to do it by Zoom or in person, and first, people in favor of the petition. Which I knew there wasn't any.
Nobody online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman?
Those people against the petition are now, yes, will come up. So when you come up, I need your name.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Bill, were you welcoming up in favor?
Four? Okay, I'm sorry, so just a minute, I mean. Okay, well, so do I.
Thank you for the excellent, oh, Bill McCarthy, 206 Churchill Drive. Thank you all for your presentations this evening. I really appreciated all the additional information. I support this project. I've been following it through the Wetlands Conservation Committee for a year and a half. Mr. Dixon said that there was going to be an applicant response, hoping that that gets published or something like that, so that we can find out what the questions were and stuff. Yeah. For me, the whole question goes back to zoning. This is zoned Berlin Turnpike, and we want to convert it to residential. Or maybe we don't want to convert it to residential, if we just want to modify the...
From my understanding, the zone stays the same, but it's allowable use because it's going to be under 8-30G.
Okay, all right, very good. Then going back to the original zoning change that happened, did the Zabatka challenge the zoning change when they owned the property a million years ago?
There is no zoning change that I'm aware of.
Well, when it became the Berlin Turnpike development zone.
When it became that, God, that's before my time.
Although, that's what I'm saying. What was the dream for that particular parcel of land? There was two houses there, two existing houses. It was included in the, in the Turnpike Development Zone.
Let me cut you, I believe the Stan Brothers, all that property. They owned the old, they bought the drive-in, they had their construction business, and they owned all the way up to Dale Electric?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like to remind for the normal procedure of the, not the back and forth.
Okay, sorry. Then just one comment for Mr. Dixon. In the report that he had published originally in the agenda, was the garages for cars only. And living in Churchill Bridge, I can tell you that almost nobody uses their garages for parking. Some of those garages are so jam-packed with stuff, it's unbelievable. But almost everybody parks outside their garages. And I don't know if we can actually make a, well, I guess we can do anything we want, but I don't think that it's appropriate that we say, yes, you can have a garage, but you can't use it unless you put a car in it. Then the final coup de grace is if this project doesn't go forward with townhouses, can we consider putting apartments there? And that would be our other option, is that this is a piece of property that needs to be developed in some way. And I think the townhouse proposal with apartments is an excellent proposal. But if that falls through and we aren't able to go forward with that, can the applicant submit an application to put some sort of apartment building there? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Anybody else in favor?
Rose Lyons has her hand raised, but I do not know.
Want to plug her in and ask her?
Nope, she dropped it.
She dropped it. Anyone against, please come up to the microphone, just kind of twist it in front of you, and we need your name and address.
I have a really big mouth, I don't need a microphone.
You do need a microphone, because the people at home want to hear you. If you talk into that mic, they won't hear you. And old people like me who are deaf won't hear you.
Come on, Steve, very good. My name's Elizabeth Shaylor, I live at 31 Woods Edge Drive, Newington, Connecticut. I've been a resident of this town for 67 years. I'm kind of not happy about what's going on with it. However, when it comes to Kits Lane, I walk up and down that road. People are not doing 25 miles an hour. I'm not tech savvy, but I did take my phone and I went from Griswoldville Road today down to the Berlin Turnpike to show we have 18 different entrances onto Kits Lane between Griswoldville condos, Ancient Highway, Butternut Road, Woods Edge, Glen Oaks, a little house, Crown Ridge, Tyndale, another guy that lets people store their construction stuff, then all these. Then you've got another parking lot where a tractor-trailer has to back into Dynet Depot, and that takes about three or four times to do it. So that blocks people coming up Kits Lane or down Kits Lane. Then you've got the boot camp, then you've got Anne Street, then you've got the driveway where the White House was knocked down, but the Blue House still stands up. Then you've got the two entrances into Stop &amp; Shop. Then they put the new car wash in, then they got two more entrances in and out of Stop &amp; Shop. Then you've got Rocco Landscaping, a Tile Place, Dairy Queen. And unless you walk it, you don't see what's really going on there. Now, I would be more than happy to be a, whatever they call those, alternate, like, police people, if the town of Newington would give me a body cam and a radar gun. I would sit randomly on Kits Lane and show everybody, all due respect to all you developer people, but if you didn't grow up in this town and you don't know this town and how small and quaint...
Turn around, please, use the mic.
Kind it was, I'm sorry. Anyway, with all due respect to everybody, being a citizen in... Anyway, with all due respect to everybody, being a citizen in Newington for sixty-seven years and seeing what goes on, people go flying up the Kits Lane, the speed limit is twenty-five, they're doing fifty. School buses go faster than they shouldn't. They got piggyback bus stops. I don't think putting forty apartments at the bottom where there's a sewer that gets clogged up and when it snows and rains in the winter, it's an ice slick. And I'm walking on a sidewalk where the guard rail is, I'm walking down Kits Lane on a sidewalk, the guard rail's here, and people are flying up and almost going over the curb and hitting me. I just don't think it's a really conducive, safe idea to put forty more apartments in at the bottom and try to figure out how they're going to get in and get out. And also, back about, I don't know how many years ago, but we had a condo fire at Woods Edge Drive down by the pool. And our fire trucks, they got down to the bottom, but then they called in Rocky Hill and Cromwell, which were blocking half of the road to get down to put that fire out also. So I just, as, on behalf of all the people that walk their dogs on Woods Edge Drive and down Kits Lane and up to Griswoldville and do their shopping like I did and go down the hill to Aldi's, come back three times carrying bags. I, I don't think it's a safe idea. I don't think it's a good idea. There's been motorcycle crashes at Anne Street in the Stop and Shop parking lot, the stop sign that comes down because there's a little curve that, if you don't drive the road all the time, you don't know where those curves are. They're coming off Griswoldville, there's a little curve right before Ancient Highway, and people are trying to pull out of Ancient Highway and only, almost get T-bones. So I just don't, I, for fire reasons, for safety reasons, for conservation, we have turkeys that used to show up, we have deer, and where you want to put that in, I just, I don't agree with the idea.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for listening.
Anybody else?
Uh. We have one online if you would like to alternate.
Yeah, move it up.
Rob, you can go ahead and speak.
Rob, we need your name and address.
He's coming, I think.
Sorry. Robert Kane, one fifty-five Brentwood Road. Uh, is the audio coming through okay?
Yes, it is.
What was his last name?
Kane. Kane.
Kane.
K A N E.
Go ahead, uh, sir.
Thank you. So I am actually neutral on this. Um, it sounds like the commission is inclined to continue it. Um, so I would suggest, uh, there is an issue where we are so close to the ten percent threshold. Um, I know we're not exempt on the list, but, uh, it appears with the number of homes sold in Newington this year, it's possible with the number of C H F A mortgages that we are over the ten percent exemption threshold. So I think if we continued the hearing and then went to the commissioner of, uh, I think it's D and C D, uh, just to verify that we are still under the ten percent. But otherwise, if we are in fact still under the ten, you know, I, I would have to support the project just because, uh, I think they did an excellent presentation. It looks very thorough. So like, on the project itself, if we're under ten percent, uh, you know, I have no problem with it. Um, and I would just remind everyone that if you're raising issues like traffic, uh, you'd need something like a traffic engineer to opine on that when we're under the ten percent threshold. So, uh, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience here who's against? Anyone? Yes, ma'am. We don't fight.
I've never done this before, so I'm kind of nervous. Uh, my name is Pamela Wood. I live at eighty-five Woods Edge Drive. And I totally agree with what Elizabeth said about the traffic and the way people are driving up and down there. I don't think adding to that would be good. We have hundreds of families living, you know, on the top half, and you know, to add to that, I just can't see it. Also, it's a beautiful woodland. Obviously, they're saying that there's a lot of, um, slope there, so it's difficult to build on. Um, and I can't believe the conservation group said it's okay when that woodland houses turkeys, skunks, possums, little groundhogs, all kinds of wonderful wildlife, which we're just, we're just, I don't know, destroying Newington. And the whole flavor of, you know, the beautiful scenery and everything, which we need in our lives. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Go ahead, Rose. She's online.
Go ahead, Rose. You, you don't come up and sit down, and we'll just let Rose speak first. Ms. Lyons?
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. Um, these are just some observations. I am, I would be for this project because I know what it's like to be a single parent and trying to have affordable housing for your child. Thirty-five years ago, I was in that position. Um, I think some of the opposition that I've seen on Facebook, and I know that's nothing in the testimony that you have here, it's just a knee-jerk reaction hearing eight thirty G. Uh, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that only thirty percent of this project is going to be affordable housing units. The rest will be market rate, um, which I can't afford. I probably can't even afford the affordable housing right at this point, being a senior on a fixed income. But I totally agree with Elizabeth with her observations regarding Kits Lane. Then again, I've been here a little bit longer than Elizabeth, seventy-eight years, and right now at eighty years old and driving out of Aldi's, I'm a little bit hesitant to pull out. Um, actually, sometimes I take the Berlin Turnpike because I feel it's, I can see better the sightline. But in any case, all that being said, um, I sat through the Dakota presentations, and I just wanted to say thank you to the town planner, the assistant town planner, the town engineer and fire chief for being in attendance because I don't think that happened, uh, other than the town planner and the assistant town planner being at Dakota because questions that needed to be answered could be answered tonight, and the ones that can't be answered tonight hopefully will be brought forward at another um, meeting. I just, uh, on the bottom, or the last thing I'd like to make is an observation. I remember sitting through Dakota and eight thirty G, eight thirty G, that was a completely eight thirty G project as far as my recollection is, other than there may be a few units now that are market rate that the town talked them into doing. But, um, several recommendations were made. I remember the economic development director coming in and talking about the color of the shingles and the this and the that. And when all was said and done, it didn't quite come out looking like we thought it was going to look. Not that we really had much say in it because once it's an eight thirty G, even if it's appealed, ninety-nine percent of the time, I think it gets approved by the courts. But I'd like to know, and maybe it's something that Paul could answer tomorrow, and doesn't have to be answered tonight, who's going to keep an eye on this project once everything is said and done to make sure that what the residents asked, what the commission asked, is done throughout the project. I want to know if it's going to come back to TPZ for changes, or it's just going to be done administratively. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Gary Steinbach, thirty-one Woods Edge Drive, Newington. Um, I think it's a terrible idea. That's a beautiful lot down there, and there's an awful lot of traffic that's coming off the crowded Berlin Turnpike now because we have so many condos going in all over the place. You look on the Berlin Turnpike now, and you, all you can see is traffic. People are speeding up that road to make a shortcut to get to the other side. And, uh, they're, they're going to, how long is it going to take to do this project? They're going to have to take out all those trees and level it out. It's, uh, I think it's going to be a nightmare. And I think people will get, get killed coming down that hill. In the winter, what do you do? And it's raining. And, and, or foggy. It's just a very dangerous situation, I think. I don't like it.
Thank you, Mr. Harpy. Anyone else willing to speak against it?
No one else online, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more you want to rebut, any of the comments that were made by the public?
Am I correct in presuming that the commission is inclined to continue the public hearing to the next meeting? And, and in that case, I'll.
I'll be shocked if we don't do that. We have to vote on it, but I would think that's where it's going.
I got to ask. In which case, I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time and, um, sure, we'll be submitting some sort of supplemental memorandum. So I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Yes, Mr. Harpy.
What is, uh, the time schedule for construction and completion in your plan?
Want me to answer?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Stone.
Just to clarify your question, Commissioner Harpy, is the question, once, if, assuming this is approved, once we start, what's, what's our, uh, total construction time? Um, as you know, the Northeast is a little bit unpredictable, but what, if I give myself a range, I would say from a twelve-month to an eighteen-month period, depending, A, when it starts, and B, what type of winter we have in between that timeframe. That, that would be the basic time. No one can tell you today exactly what's going to happen in the winter, so I could have to shut down for a month. I could, maybe it's fine to build through the winter. So from start date to completion, I say optimistically twelve, pessimistically eighteen months.
And would it, from a management standpoint, the, uh, type of equipment and trucks and whatnot would be working on the site itself? It wouldn't be parking somewhere in the grocery store or Kits Lane, correct?
Correct. We, we, during a construction process, just like with any other project, we contain our parking areas, and that's one of the first things we do with the site people is get a spot so everyone can park.
And you would have a flag man where necessary or a flag woman?
If, if there's one necessary, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, approval of minutes.
We have one.
Motion to close the public.
It's be a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, not, we're not going to close the public hearing. We're going to leave the public hearing open.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I knew that. So, uh, petition TPZ twenty-five sixteen, site plan for a forty-unit rental apartment home development under CGS eight thirty G, affordable housing application at two twenty, two twenty-six, two forty-four Kits Lane and two twenty-six Kits Lane rear in the BBT zone for Business Berlin Turnpike. Owner, applicant Kits Lane Apartments LLC. Contact Timothy Hollister. Motion to continue the public hearing. Move to continue the public hearing for application TPZ twenty-five sixteen to the September tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
A motion made in a second. Second by Mr. Naft, Commissioner Naftus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Chris, you, you're in favor?
Yes, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we can move on. Approval of minutes. We have one meeting, uh, August thirteenth. Someone like to move that? So, um. Commissioner Harpy moved it in a second.
Fox. I think it was Fox.
You moved the.
You made the motion?
No, I did.
Oh, Harvey made the motion. Okay.
In a second.
Sorry.
You guys are fine.
Michael a second.
Michael.
Second. I got Mr. Harpy and Mr. Fox. Yeah.
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I abstain. With one abstention, uh, Commissioner Naftus. Uh, next item is new business.
Okay, so the item under new business is the application that's heard tonight. Publicist's hearing is still open, so it cannot be acted upon.
Old business, right?
Old business.
So as noted in the.
Right, find it with everything you've got.
Okay.
They're looking to extend.
That it was a, um, so this was already tabled. Um, unfortunately, I didn't include it in the application packet, but the, uh, the applicant's engineer did indicate that they would be willing to even grant additional time. I can add that in. Um, the issue is going to be that at their next meeting, that the wetland commission will not even act it yet. So this is actually, we have until the twenty-sixth. So hopefully by that meeting, if the wetlands commission, if the conservation commission does act upon it, then the commission can move forward. So by our time, this is twenty-sixth, but if something happens um, at the wetland commission or the conservation commission, I'll be able to update the TPZ. So again, they are just asking for it to be tabled. I don't have the motion prepared. It was tabled, but the last time.
Yeah, so we just leave what it says.
So it stays tabled.
Okay. But like you said, they are willing to grant an extension.
Right. And they, they have been working with us. Um, again, the applicant's engineer, uh, continues to work with us as they work through the property of through their conservation commission application.
Next item. Yes.
Would Chris, uh, Chris, would you have time to review that within that timeframe?
The Casodoro application? Uh, it's currently in front of the Conservation Commission, so I've reviewed it for that. Uh, when that commission wraps up its business and makes a decision, then I'll do a, an additional staff review with Paul for the planning and zoning application. If anything substantial has changed in the process of the Conservation Commission hearing.
Okay, thank you.
But I shouldn't have said hearing. I want to correct myself. Wrong word. They are not doing a public hearing for that. It's just a regular meeting.
Thank you.
With the next petition received for scheduling, we have two.
Yep. So we have two, and, um, so one of these, again, uh, petition, uh, TPZ twenty-five eighteen. Again, this is for physical activity for personal training facility. Um, this is one that's already, it's Revolution Sports Club. They're already in town. They're moving to another one. Due to the timing of the review of the application we heard tonight, we haven't been able to work, get them on the, uh, schedule. Um, this is something that I would ask whether, um, the commissioners here would be up to entertaining even a special meeting, a virtual meeting, or something like that, if we could arrange it, that if they need to get their permit in place to move into the new location. Again, this is one of those items where, um, when we rewrite the regulations, I would like to reorganize what's a special permit, what's not. But right now, this is a special permit, and it does need a public hearing, and it just needs to be, there wasn't enough time to advertise it for the meeting on the tenth. So if this is something where the commission would be open to even a virtual special meeting, just to hear this one application, you can let me know it is a public hearing. So that's something you might not want to do with a, with the public, but again, this is a minor one.
Yeah. Anybody have any issues? I don't think we're going to bring out a whole lot of people for this.
Yep.
If anyone. I mean, anybody have any issues if Paul's able to schedule us for a special meeting, we'll be involved.
Okay. Yep. So I'll, I'll look into that. I'll talk with the applicant again to, we want it. Yeah, we're going for them. We want to do the best we can to support our businesses in town, and it's just the timing, and again, and then moving from one lease to another. Um, the second item B, uh, that's a special permit to provide by the entertainment and recreation at eighty Fen Road, um, industrial. This is the Montana Knights. Um, so we need to do some research on the previous file, um, put together the, uh, information before we schedule the public hearing. And we're anticipating, um, scheduling that public hearing for the second meeting in September.
That doesn't carry over to that life before when it was.
So again, we have to research the file. We didn't see that it had it.
See that. I thought they came in front of us and asked for that.
They, they came in front of, you guys had discussion about food.
Yeah.
And the liquor license and everything else, and the liquor license that was originally, did not have the entertainment on it that I saw.
You don't think they had it?
Yep. So it's possible. Again, thi- this is the one, if we research the file, if we research the file and it is included in there, then maybe it comes moot.
Okay.
And we work with the applicant. If it's not included in there, we bring it in front. Again, it just requires a little bit of.
It might just be like the one we did for the bowling alley a year and a half or two years ago. It's like.
Yeah. You know, maybe I'm confusing it with the bowling alley.
Yep.
I don't remember any entertainment thing in that.
It might be the bowling alley, but not.
Again, well.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, we'll research the file again to not talk too in-depth about the actual application.
They're both throwing things, so.
Uh, next item is town planner report. Um, so, uh, what I can report towards is we are getting, um, closer to having the final steering committee for the Town Center Master Plan. Um, we've provided comments back to the applicant. We'll be pulling to get, uh, together that steering committee, reviewing that document, and then doing a, uh, presentation, uh, likely in front of the town council, um, that kind of introduces that final plan. Again, it's a living document. It's one of those things that we take this plan, move it forward, take the recommendation and expand upon them. But again, this is our, our first step in what the future of that area can be. And as we know, there's going to be plenty of zoning discussions, um, because of the current zone of public land and the very restrictive nature of the public land zone. and the very restrictive nature of the public land zone, uh, within that Hartford Healthcare property. So, that's gonna be ongoing, if you wanna get that in and, you know, again, we're not rushing it. We're getting the comments in and making sure that that document is what is, you know, what needs to be presented to the town. And other than that, I know people have been asking about occupancy, I don't have all the numbers on that one. I can say that, uh, I, what I've seen at the Mill Yard is they're actually about eighty-eight percent occupied, which is pretty good, um, for like less than one year of operating.
Yeah.
Um, so that is going well. Um, I did talk to, um, Mark Belo from Dakota Partners, um, and he's primarily said he had, you know, from there when they've had a little issue moving the, the three bedrooms. Because three bedrooms are a little more difficult, um, right now, um, in the affordable market, just because finding people qualifying for that. That is a little more challenging, it's kind of that higher income, but not, it's, those can be that kind of a, you know, Cinderella spot for what someone is making and what they qualify for. Um, I will try to get some from Payne, I know people have been asking about the Payne and Maselli Road property, I don't have numbers for that yet. And again, we do have plenty of projects that we need to, uh, get off the ground and get moving. Um, we're working, again, with engineering on some streetscape projects and we're just gonna keep moving forward. I will, uh, note that on September eleventh at five thirty P M, uh, we, there is a, uh, pu- a public meeting. Uh, this is for the Resilient Connecticut two point O. Uh, this is for Piper and, um, and Webster Brook study, um, that we did. So this is, um, again, done through CROG, um, and through, um, other partners at the state. Uh, they, and Yukon Clear, there you go. So CROG and Yukon Clear utilizing Tool Design Company. Uh, I believe they were the one, was Tool on this one or was it?
S L R.
S L R, sorry, I have so many projects. So, S L R on this one, um, the two projects and, uh, Chris might actually wanna, if you wanna take over on this one, it's Coles Road and.
You mean the location?
Yeah.
Oh, it's at Alverium Brewery.
Oh, okay.
And John Downey Drive in New Britain, which is not by accident, it happens to be where this all started. Um, a couple of years ago when I was new here, I think I'm still new here, but that's another point.
Um, Paul and I were invited, I would say, to investigate a flooding concern along the Amtrak Railroad by the, uh, owner of Alverium through, I believe it was Gary Turco's office. So, we went to a meeting there with Gary and his aide and, um, some folks from D E P and New Britain. And it happened to be a very rainy day and we observed the flooding in progress. So that was the interesting part, uh, that this was the beginning of kicking off this study. I'm not quite clear how it got to a study from our observations and recommendations back. I, I presume the, uh, the heavy lifting came through Gary's office because, uh, I don't think Paul and I did that much to get it off the ground. But it turned into a major study of both of these water courses and what we can do as, um, major projects for the town of Newington, something for me to work on going forward. But also cooperative, uh, projects with New Britain and Berlin, which has the added benefit of it is easier to get larger grants when you are a cooperative applicant with your neighbors. So where we might qualify for a certain level of grant funding on a certain program for our little problems, when we combine it into that whole Webster Brook corridor area, uh, along with New Britain and, and Berlin, we have a greater range of, uh, possibilities for funding. And of course, the more we can do, the more we can reduce the fu- uh, flooding along both, uh, Stam Road, John Downey, um, on the Berlin side, it's all the way down through Mill Street into the, uh, Madison River. And it's, uh, it, to me, it's, uh, a positive thing to see government working this way, because prior to coming to work for municipalities, I, like most people, didn't realize we could actually get things done. So, uh, that's kind of my reason Paul turned it over to me is I'm, I'm very excited about getting this study to the point where it's got recommendations and some, uh, hard numbers that we can use for these, uh, grant applications. And it happens that we're gonna close the meeting where we started it at Alverium. And as far as I'm concerned, if I have to work at night, I'd just as soon do it at a brewery. So, thank you for your time on that comment.
Was the railroad part of that route?
I wish it was.
Uh, that's been the snuggling block there all along.
It has been, I have several other studies that were done in the past where Amtrak is primarily the culprit and it, I'm using the correct word because we can't easily get them to even take a phone call from me. Uh, but if we have a large enough, um, push, let's say, I think we can make something happen with that. Now, if we start converting the culverts under the railroad, it does cross in five places. And every single one of them I've personally observed are very poor geometry for water flow. I'm, I'm not gonna try and claim I'm a hydro, hydro geologist or an hydrologic engineer, but I'm familiar enough with it to know that when you have ninety-degree bends in a brook, water doesn't flow well. Uh, I have seen the culvert that crosses New Britain Avenue. Uh, the term is boil with water under a relatively small storm event, like a, um, inch or inch and a half of rain and gone out and observed it an hour and a half later. And it's at full capacity, so it's overtopping the culvert, which is what makes it boil. It literally looks like it's boiling water, it is moving so turbulently. Uh, and then it outlets to the other side of New Britain Avenue and it just flows off peacefully down towards New Britain where it starts all over again at Route nine.
Yeah, I don't think anybody realizes how big of a wetland that is from Stam Road all the way down through into Berlin, it's massive.
Mm-hmm.
Massive.
And it's fortunate that it is, because if it was any more built up, our flooding problems would be far more severe. That wetland does an awful lot to, to keep the flooding at bay.
I would agree with you.
Yeah. And what I was trying to add is, uh, again, the two, uh, priority site concepts that were studied in Newington are Wilson Avenue and, um, Coles Avenue. So, if you get that on there, again, those will be included, um, again, in this preliminary study and the goal is for us to, again, we raised our hands as fast as possible, um, and have been part of the steering committee for this. And again, the goal is to take this information and continue moving it forward to work on and get grants for our flood control issues.
I mean, both of those structures were already on my radar, so it's, uh, nice to get a little, you know, confirmation that, uh, I wasn't out of my mind thinking we should replace those. I would, would have liked to have done the one on Robbins, but we were in the middle of constructing that project when I started here. So it's a little too late to go back and replace that structure.
Any questions for the planner or Chris? Uh, communications, crop letters are in there? Anything to add?
Nope.
Back to public participation. Anybody, anybody on?
Rose does not have her hand raised.
Does not. All right, remarks by commissioners? Um, those remarks by chair, just, I wanna thank everybody else, a long night, we haven't been here for this long and quite a while. And we actually ran two back-to-back meetings, I think they're only thirty, thirty-five minutes. That's gonna be over, I think. Um, application is, uh, completed. Without a thick emotion to adjourn?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
Aye.